Mr. Gray, can you ready? All right, council, let's get to work. Uh, welcome everyone, uh, to our Tuesday, July fifteenth, uh, council meeting. Uh, I need a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Creel, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Gray, any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed, motion carries. If the clerk would read any revisions, do we need to start down here? Mr. Marshall?
Are we on the agenda order?
We're on the agenda order. Mr. Creel?
I'd like to make a motion to, if we could, move five J from the policy agenda to, I mean, from the consensus agenda.
Okay, Mr. Creel, uh, would like to make a agenda order motion to five J to four C. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Marshall, any additional discussion? All in favor? Opposed? That motion carries, are there any additional revisions? Is that it, or do we? Okay. Carrie?
To the policy agenda, there's like that year five, these are the positions of the law enforcement, which is the contract and D and E for exact service to the greater center. And to the citizens who are having five, law of the position of checking technical number four, to the construction grid of the DNA underground and specifically some changes of provisions for support under structure.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? As a member?
I'll make a motion.
Second by Mr. Tisdale, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Creel, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Mayor report?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I see a lot of smiling faces out there, welcome everyone to our meeting. And I hope that smile might end with me, so, uh, I did refer to all of this, I think we got a long gathering award just for this. You got to show it up? We showed up. But still, very great, no dedication. Uh, and fourth, the mayor's report, I think we got some activity tomorrow morning, seven thirty, eight AM, the doors open in the morning, uh, at, uh, Hard Rock, with the mayor, uh, with the mayor, uh, I think a few other mayors there, someone, few officials. Uh, and then also our inspection is going on right now, July twenty-third, three to seven at the opening, got, let's see, you come for us like we do every year. And, uh, also, uh, beginning in the citizens' police academy demonstration now, that starts the, uh, the, uh, class called August first, as well as, uh, all season for, uh, the outside hall at, uh, the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, uh, I believe it, it was March fourth.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I don't believe we have any department reports, so we'll move on to council reports. Mr. Gray?
Yeah, uh, keep, uh, appreciate y'all, uh, I want to, uh, thank y'all for your guys putting out fire when you're on the way back. Yeah, we have all thanks, uh, and, uh, thank y'all. And, uh, Steve, uh, citizens tell me that they're doing a lot of people, he, uh, that had an argument with their company back then, or in the neighborhood, and your, uh, officers, uh, on the table, what do you call them, those come out, and he just wanted to say how far they were, and how good, how, how nice they were, so, let you know. And, uh, we got the point today, uh, the point, uh, late fishing tournament coming up on August the second, third, there's, uh, eighty-five hundred, eighty-five hundred after we win, from opening up the, uh, the city and harbor, of course, with the, uh, the fishermen, but actually in tile of a number of masks, that does like a mile or two, so hopefully they stop down and let them come for it, it will be, uh, fishing tournament. And the mayor, Mr. Gray, just asking about the, uh, list for vehicles, and, uh, put it, there's just something, maybe, I've been acting after that, just to do vehicles, like in the classes, or, uh, equipment, uh, off the ground.
Okay, all right, hopefully we can get it by Friday, maybe?
Yeah, that's all, uh, all right, hopefully we can get it by Friday, maybe?
Uh, Steve, uh, thank you. Uh, in, 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 uh, my, uh, to the, uh, I want to, uh, give you, I want to give you a few, uh, mayor. Father, there is structure, I didn't feel, in order to be off the mission, that my citizens, my, uh, parents, uh, I came to do, uh, this, uh, more presentation on the, uh, agenda, at this time. Okay, Mr. Mayor?
I just want to thank, uh, city blood, city public works, something else, sudden happenings, you know, when we clean that up, getting that, looking good, and I just wanted to say, you know, the board is for four, three, and, uh, Phillip Park, we're doing some stuff behind the scenes, I just want everybody to know where you got that, Phillip Park, after and, you know, et cetera, and, uh, we're still cleaning up some local fans on ball water, I ain't gonna let ball water go, and that's about it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to the crew.
All right, just a few things, uh, I know we have a meeting next week, uh, school starts next week, so, we prepared the school buses, kids, uh, traffic, uh, just to head up there, I know these people, uh, to the school system, it has moved a few school bus stops within Ward Four, and I'm sure throughout the city, so, please be aware of, uh, your school bus stops and your, and your school zones. Um, Peter, on the Mardi Gras issues, have we come to any resolve, do we resolve anything on that, or any public workshop scheduled, anything?
Yeah, we've reached out to everybody on the list, we're in contact with them, I believe, uh, any outstanding checks have been recovered or located, we've told them their status, we're going, we plan to have another, uh, workshop, we're looking at the end of this month, July thirtieth, just to update everybody on where things are.
Thank you, thank you. I don't, I know they say throw me something, I don't want them throwing anything, right? So, um, the Sanger, I know we talk about the Sanger and, and the money and the tours and, and, um, uh, this thing is going to be ready in weeks, not months, is there any way we could get a scheduled tour to where we could go through and actually see the progress up, up front?
This point, Christie, I think, uh, we had, we're, uh, there's some delay in receiving the carpet, all right? I think most everything has been cleaned and, uh, uh, HVAC, there's a little bit of final touches to do.
So, um, yeah, the HVAC, we got a little repair to do there, carpet, we received bids, we were supposed to receive them tomorrow, we pushed them back a week, um, so that'll be next week, then, that may take eight to ten weeks to get the carpet here, depends on what our proposals look like that we get, but other than that, we got a little bit of painting and stucco work, and-
And some cleaning, yeah, right, and I think-
There's some cleaning, yeah.
There's some, uh, on the orchestra pit, there's some, some cleaning and some painting there.
If we, if we throw a hard hat on, could we, could we actually get a tour?
No, we can do it.
Yeah, we got people asking-
We can do it, you want a tour at the end of the week, we can do it at the end of the week.
Oh, that'd be perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, great, great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Uh, let's see, um, going through these agendas that we've had over the past few meetings that I've been in attendance to, I, I see where we waived some fees for this organization, that organization, is, do we keep a running tally of how many, at the end of the year, how many fees we waived to see how much in-con donations that we, we've done?
Well, I think, you know, the, the contracts, I'm not sure, uh, of what we do.
We do? Okay, perfect, is there any way we can get totals of that? Perfect, yes.
But at this point, I mean, it, it takes council approval to waive, so every time in, in, in the past, you know, we change it where you're going to approve everything that we-
Right, no, 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 and, and I'm all for it.
Different groups, you know, five oh one C trees and some organizations visiting, uh, public officials, you know, like, uh, circuit clerks and some of these other folks that, you know, we do some good things with, and, so-
I'm, I, look, I'm, I'm all for it and, and, and it's deemed necessary, I, I just, A, the one question I was, I was asking is if we can get a total to see at the end of the year, what, what, how much that in-con donation was, and B, if we could, when we do the resolutions, if we could add the amount to the-
Wave.
To the upfront, instead of having to go into the link to see what it is, that way we can look and see what the amounts are there as well.
Yeah.
Um, so parks and beautification commissions, are those viable, are those still in existence?
Commission's being talked about, right, the commission itself.
The parks, and there was a parks and then there was a beautification.
Same with one, though.
Like one?
There's, there's one of them that's, I believe, a, a member from each ward, I think that's the Parks Committee, uh, you know, I think neither, none of these have been filled since the mid-eighties or nineties. The beautification, I mean, they're still in the books, the beautification talked about, um, one member for every thousand citizens, which could be fifty members, and that's put together and run by the council, so-
So we can streamline that if we need-
We probably should have a workshop on how we want to either combine those or-
Okay.
Or deal with those.
Uh, and last but not least, I'd be remiss if I didn't wish our council president a happy birthday.
Happy birthday!
Thank you.
Appreciate that, Jamie, very much. Uh, Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, Nick, get the fireboat ready for the birthday cake. Yeah, several things-
You're going to need more than the fireboat.
Get a bigger boat, right? Um, I've mentioned an easement behind three sixteen Carter Road, it's a city easement, and the south end intersects or ends there at Randall Drive in Bay Vista, and if, I've had property owners for the three houses on the southern end of Carter, I think it's Carter, yeah, and they'd like the easement cleared behind their properties, you can't go much farther than that because there are fences that cross that easement, and nobody wants to move their fence or anything, but I'd appreciate that if, if a crew could be out there in the next week or two and just take care of that, if anybody wants guidance or I'm happy to meet them at the site, for that matter. Two roads, Lakeview Drive, this is north of Lakeview Boulevard and Edgewater Estates, on the, the roadway is deteriorating, there's a, the, the property there drains to the east, down to a culvert and then out to the bay, but the road's been deteriorating for a number of years, and there's similar deterioration along Churchill Avenue, and there's a little history on that shoulder, but the, the road's going to begin to deteriorate more rapidly unless something's done. Also, herbicides, I've noticed, we got the, it's not Agent Orange, so I hate to say that, but it's like the Agent Orange wagon or something, they're spraying, and trust me-
Multiple, multiple-
We're getting our money's worth, I, I would hope that we would get a little less than our money's worth, I mean, I was looking at a fireplug and there's a three-foot circle around it that's dead, and they didn't get everything between the curb and the sidewalk on Pass Road, but they got most of it, so, A, the stuff works, B, we just need to be a little more surgical, I think, in the application. Fri- Friday noon, I was hoping to get, we're going to discuss, uh, parks and recreation today, I think, and we're going to discuss the executive budget and engineering, and I don't have anything to look at it, we're going to see those documents for the first time today, I, did somebody email them to me, I didn't receive them, receive them.
Those were emailed out earlier, did you not get any, did anyone not get any?
Did, I beg your pardon?
Got them late today.
You emailed it this morning, so, okay, I hadn't, so it's in my mailbox, but it wasn't there over the weekend.
And we'll work on that to get it to you on Friday.
Okay, it's just, we, I don't know how much we can accomplish when we're just seeing the documents for the first time, am I the only one that?
I don't know anything about it.
Okay, all right. When did you get that this morning?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, uh, so anyway, we, it's just, I like to prepare for these things. Also, if, um, if we could get a copy of the combined fund statement draft, usually we get that at the very end of the budgeting process.
Well, I, it, it's an exercise, and I think there'd be multiple iterations of everything we've done as we revise itself, so I think that Diana does that-
Understand, that, that would be fine, and I don't mind looking at the multiple inter- iterations, because I'd kind of like, I know it's a moving target.
Yeah, well, part of the moving target, you ask about all the time, is we're projecting as far as we just got our gaming revenue figures, which impacts another three months, so, I mean, and, and it's usually seven or eight days late, so you can't really project, you know, an ending balance or a beginning balance of, of the twenty-sixth till we, you know, we catch up.
But we can do the best we can, it's just when we get these things at the last minute, or the last week, when we've got a deadline in September to get it up to Jackson, and here we are rushed, we do that pretty much every year, so I'm just trying to get a handle on this so we know where we're going, that's just me, I'm only speaking for me, but it's hard for me to prepare for these things, um, if we don't get the information we're requesting, but I'd, I'd like to see also a, a list of capital projects in Excel and a PDF format, and a list of, uh, current projects, and a list of projects that are being proposed for fiscal year twenty-six, any capital projects, uh, and I, typically when we've gotten those in the past, I think, and there are several examples on the city's financial reports page.
Rachel, I think, has kept, as of five thirty, you had that spreadsheet that you send me on a regular basis, we can include that to them, as you reconcile to, to June, are you at June right now or after June? Yeah, there's about forty-five capital projects that have, in various pha- phases and of-
All right, and do we have any capital projects planned for fiscal year?
Not, we were trying to finish up a lot of things that are in place, I have anything, uh, i- if we get an indication, uh, one example would be, two examples, would be, uh, we had about eight hundred thousand dollars to expand the boat ramp at Coon Street, we were expecting five hundred thousand to meet the one, Christie, holler at me if I'm wrong, we asked for five hundred thousand for that, it's five hundred thousand for the, uh, the Oak Street Pier, the expansion of the Oak Street Pier, uh, we, they, they chose not to give us anything, so that's still a capital project, we still done, it, it, but it's not new, but we, but we haven't really committed to do, we got engineering, we're ready to bid it, but we can't bid it till we have that, that, you know, a million dollars worth of tidelands that we're hopeful, so those are the kinds of things that are capital projects, we haven't really begun other than some preliminary engineering, I have, of course, the hottest thing that's cooking right now is the expansion of, uh, Offs Ferry Road, and the bridge repair, the, you know, we have fit, we're, how many, uh, what phase are we, thirty percent through with, uh, Kuval and, uh, that, that situation, so, I think there was an incident at, uh, Wilkes, uh, Bridge yesterday, where they, uh, Gulfport, Cowan and Lorraine Rose held up seven hours for the bridge, but this fifteen million dollar project is to prevent exactly that, uh, but that's a capital project, and, uh, we, you know, we haven't started it other than preliminary, so those are the, I haven't added anything new, I didn't, you know, didn't put an amusement park or anything like that on, on, on the books at this point.
All right, so Oak Street, we've created that capital project, and there's no tidelands funding for that project?
There is tidelands funds that we receive-
There is, but you're asking for more?
Asking for additional, because, like anything, time is money, and it, and it increases, it, it doesn't go down, when we actually bid at least the Coon Street expansion, which triples the amount of, of boats you can handle, from the parking and the trailer parking, as well as putting six, you know, six boats in the water at the same time, since there's only one boat launch, boat launch on this side of town, and that's at the small Craft Harbor, so that's been on the radar for three or four years.
Uh, it's about four or five years, and at what point do we actually finish that project?
Soon as we finish, you know, getting the, the sourcing, which, which is the half a million will put us in the right spot, those are the new capital projects, if you will.
All right, half a million from tidelands?
That would give us, yeah, half a million for Oak Street Pier, which we already have, half a million for it too, right?
All right, so what if we don't get this additional half million from Coon Street? Are we going to start on Coon Street without that half million and do what we can, or are we going to wait on Coon Street another year?
We're going to wait, you know, there's a bu- bunch of opportunities that should have come our way, and, you know, we're, we're looking for some legislative support, you know, how, when you look at what Biloxi gets over the course of time, you know, uh, we're, we're going to hold, hold tight on getting this thing done, there's no reason, since eighty, eighty-five percent of the tidelands money that's generated, is generated by properties in the city of Biloxi, and we get zero, is not acceptable.
So on the Coon Street project, how much, um, city money is tied up in that project?
None, there, there no matches, none.
Okay, and on Oak Street?
Same thing, same thing.
None, okay. That's all I have, but I'd like to get those, uh-
We'll get you that spreadsheet.
Budget documents in Excel and in PDF format, for those things that I requested, I appreciate it, thank you. Uh, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale, Mr. Shoemaker?
I just have one thing today, Daffy's, the old bar on Sandbar Lane, it's been an eyesore and a, oh gosh, a public nuisance for years, but it's finally, uh, it's been bided out, contractor, I think he had a few issues with some other things, so it's kind of been put on the, um, waiting list for a little while, but I think starting this week, it's going to be, uh, they're starting to demolish it, so hopefully that, that will go as planned and the weather will hold out and they can get that done soon, but that's coming this week.
Oh, he adapted.
And, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker, I, I got a few things, uh, I'm going to start out with a, a, a pretty good meeting, uh, that we held over the weekend, I, I see Ms. Linda Hornsby, our executive director with the Mississippi Hotel Lodging Association in the audience, uh, the mayor, uh, the mayor of Gulfport, our, our mayor, Mayor Gulfport, our C O, our attorney, among other dignitaries, uh, Mike Azil's office, Cindy Hyde Smith had a representative, uh, there, among others, and the event I'm talking about was the council general of, uh, from, uh, India to the United States made a visit, uh, his primary visit, uh, from his offices in Atlanta, uh, was to visit Mobile, where they're, uh, putting in a major aluminum processing plant, uh, to make aluminum cans and to, uh, process aluminum rolls of, of just bulk aluminum, and, uh, he was invited by some of the Indian hoteliers, physicians, and other entrepreneurs on the coast, and he obliged them, and we had a really, really nice visit, um, we presented him with his own personal box of Pusser Ratus, uh, that made a big hit, um, and he really got to, uh, not only see a little bit of the coast visiting Biloxi, but he, it, what was more important, he was able to see the continuity of our industries, of our leadership, and our willingness to engage and see what opportunities might be on the horizon, Mayor, you want to expound on his visit a little bit?
It was an, I think he was, his eyes were open to the opportunity that we, they were sitting in that corridor between, uh, you know, Slidell and Stanis and, uh, Pascagoula, but, but right in Biloxi and Harrison County, uh, I think the expression of, uh, uh, what we were doing from a cyber and, and AI hit, hit a note with them, and, and with, as far as, uh, you know, the, the, the community, the Indian community, in, in, in the industries that they're involved with, so I think his eyes were open, I think it was, it was a great visit, I, I think he went into, went up to visit with the governor, uh, the Monday, or last, yesterday.
Right.
So, no, it was, it was a great visit.
So, you know, those are little meetings that can, uh, you know, turn into some, uh, big-time, uh, opportunities, so, so that was pretty, pretty good. Um, also want to, uh, if you haven't seen the B news, uh, the mayor's kicked off a big litter awareness, uh, campaign, uh, they asked me to give a quote as well, but I, I think it's real important as we, uh, promote the awareness of keeping our city clean, it creates that image, not only from a cleanliness standpoint, but people feel safer, they just feel good, not only our visitors, but our locals alike, and all of a sudden it becomes a habit that not only we're doing our part with the resources that we have, but the whole community, uh, is doing their part where they can bend over and pick up some trash or, or participate, uh, in some of these, uh, trash pickup days, or, or just doing it individually as a, a business that maintains a, a median or a park or, or whatever, so I'm really excited about that, it just seems like over the last few months, there, there's more engagement in the community, I know we got a event coming up with the train depot on painting the depot, and I, I'm, I'm just seeing multiple, uh, litter, so, litter awareness campaigns that are, that are happening in around the city, it's just a good thing to see. Also, uh, I, I want to recognize engineering for, uh, Christie's efforts, uh, over on Fern Circle and Malpass Landing, uh, they have started a major drainage improvement plan, uh, that community has been waiting, it seems like forever, it, it's been a long time, uh, they're really excited, I went out there and, uh, met with the crew today from, uh, D N A Underground, uh, they're trying to get ahead of this rain that might be on the horizon, and hopefully they can finish up and meet their timeline, if not, they'll, they'll finish up shortly, so, uh, that's another, another improvement, not only for the Malpass Landing, but the surrounding neighborhoods, I think it'll improve some of the drainage around there too. I, I do have a question, I do see the red flags down the, uh, the bayous and inlets and canals, uh, for the dredging project, I, I haven't necessarily seen any barges or, or boats yet, uh, can I, Christie, you know, you have any information on that? Uh, the target date was July eighth, but I don't know if it's kind of wobbled or moved a little bit.
Um, so they did have a barge, it's probably was their survey barge, it's probably where the flags came out, their debris barge will be next, um, they're probably finishing up, they, we make them go in and do, we, we do a hydrographic survey during design, but we make them go do another one so that we can track the actual, uh, silt remove before and after, and that's probably what you see.
Yeah, they were about, about a hundred eighty or a hundred flag-
Yeah, yeah.
-holes out there, yeah.
So, I can find out when their debris barge will be coming exactly, um, but it should be, it should be soon, they're just waiting on probably to get that survey completed, they'll have to submit it to us, we'll review it, we don't have it yet, but-
Okay.
I'm late.
All right, good news, too. Um, Hudson Cron, uh, and this kind of affects Ward Seven and Ward Six, one, one side of Hudson Cron is Ward Seven, the other side is Ward Six, uh, there's some areas that look okay as far as, uh, uh, the grass and the ditches, uh, but there's more that are starting to get overtaken, especially by Mason, uh, Drive, uh, that's an area where there's a little pond that overspills into the drainage on Mason, and then it, then it overflows onto Hudson Cron drainage system, and if any of those systems get blocked or clog, it creates a major, major issue, so I just ask if Public Works can go put their, put their eyes on it and see if that's something they need to pull the trigger sooner than later on it. And then the last thing, uh, Public Works has responded to some leaks that were seeping up, uh, through Brody Road, it looks like they, they jumped on it, I, I don't see the leaks any longer, um, but, and I'm sure they got to wait for maybe it to settle or whatever, they, they put some, they, they dug up the road, fixed the problem, put some gravel in the middle of Brody Road, but at some point that needs to be, uh, dressed up or, or paved or some asphalt over it, uh, so it don't wash out and somebody rolls over it and all of a sudden they, they say they damaged their car, uh, and with that, that concludes my report, that's enough. All right, we'll move on to, uh, public agenda, uh, citizens' comments.
Mr. President, I, I have one presentation to make that she's finally shown, one of our finest is here with us, I, I got two pronunciations, Chelsea Anne Dulong, as they say in South Louisiana, Delonge, we appreciate you, uh, this is five years of service to Biloxi, thank you so much, we appreciate it. Patrol Officer First Class Investigator, one of our finest, come on up. We can take a look.
Yes, sir.
And that concludes my mayor's report.
All right, thank you, Mayor, we'll move on to the, uh, public agenda, citizens' comments, we have a total allotted time of forty-five minutes, each individual, uh, raise your hand to be recognized, come up to the front and sign in and state your name clearly along with your address, and then you'll have three minutes to talk on any topic you wish to talk about, this is not a Q and A, so if you're asking questions, uh, this is not that type of, uh, format. And, uh, we got a, a, a pretty good agenda today, and we got a special meeting after this, so we're going to adhere to the three-minute rule pretty closely, so I'm, I'm going to start on my left, your right, if you raise your hand to be recognized, if you want to come up, yes, ma'am? By your second? Yep?
Can you push the button, see if it's on?
Testing.
There you go, thank you.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, happy birthday, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Um, I'm Jane Maynard, seven seven eight Water Street, Biloxi in Ward One, and I am not here to talk about bonds today, but I am here to talk about money, specifically for the Clear Sequal Hornsby Biloxi Lions Club Park on Benaki Avenue in Ward One, as I think- As I think Councilman Tisdale and Councilman Glavine may remember, back in 2017, the city renamed that park, which used to be Lopez Park, for Claire Sequel Hornsby in honor of her lifetime of achievement, which I won't list because I only have three minutes, but it's in your resolution you adopted in 2017, and also in appreciation of the efforts of the Biloxi Lions Club, which has made many financial and sweat equity contributions to the park. The signs, and there is no sign in the park with the new name of the park. It still says Lopez Park. It's my understanding that in one of the fiscal years shortly after Ms. Hornsby's passing, that there was money budgeted for new signage, but it didn't happen, and I think that authorization has lapsed. I have spoken with the family, I've spoken with the board of the Biloxi Lions Club, and our preference is for a wall sign similar to what we have at the Biloxi Visitor Center, which is in the same block, and the Biloxi Lighthouse Park, which is just a block over. You know, that white brick wall sign with the lettering on it with the name of the park and the seal of the City of Biloxi, and maybe we could put the seal of the Lions Club on it. But we understand that the city has to approve the design and the city has to bid it out and approve the project. But we're, we think we can get that done for $10,000. We're asking for $10,000. The Biloxi Lions Club Board has passed a resolution asking for $10,000. That would be the same $10,000, not an additional. And if I may approach, I have a copy of that resolution I'd like to give to each of you. And if it's appropriate, could I have that entered into the record?
Sure.
Yes, ma'am.
So respectfully, we would ask that as you're doing the budget, this budget season, that you take that into consideration and find us some money to get that going. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? My left, your right. In the back? Yep.
My name is Yvonne Harrison. I live at 149 Acacia Avenue here in Biloxi, Ward One. And I know it's not a Q and A, but of course I do have some Q and As, not the answers, I just have questions. First, I want to thank you all for the storm preparation that's going on with the tree trimming in the area. It's really important that we stay prepared, and I think it was you, Mr. Tisdale, that talked about important of planning and being prepared. And as we know, a tropical storm looks like Dexter is approaching us, and, and we all know about the horrific tragedy in Kerr, Texas. And it makes me concerned as we look at budgeting, to make sure that we have the funds necessary for emergency response, knowing that we will not have the federal funds that we've had in the past. So I ask, as we look at the budgeting process, that we can do all that we can to make sure the City of Biloxi is prepared for storms that may come away. We know we can't, we can't prevent the storms, but certainly whatever we can do to be alert and prepared, and that comes to me to planning. The second comment I will make with regard to planning and looking at budget is looking at having a strategy for helping the folks that are unsheltered. We know as of July 1st, the law now is in the state that people can be incarcerated for camping on public campgrounds, that they're not, if they're not permitted to do so. And I know that will put a burden on our police force. I know that we have people here that are unsheltered. I know we've talked repeatedly about a shelter and looking at Harrison County. Fortunately, so far this year, there's been no deaths that are known due to be heat, stroke or heat-related for the people that are unsheltered. And again, we have a storm coming in, so we want to be able to protect the unsheltered folks. So as we look at the budget, I'd ask for making sure we have the funds necessary to address that issue as well as storm protection. Thank you so much for your service and time.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left? Raise your hand to be recognized. All right. We'll go over to my right, your left. Anyone? That's one long name.
Job starts now.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Laura Bragg. I'm here representing the Salvation Army Croc Center. Want to thank you all so much for your support in the past. As you know, we do not turn anyone away for inability to pay at our facility. So, and part of that is definitely due to your generous contributions in the past. So we're going to be asking again for your support for the Croc Center. So be looking for that very soon, but thank you again for everything that you do for the Croc Center. We're doing some great things there. If you ever want to come by and take a tour, we'd be happy to do that for you. So thank you all so much.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right, your left? Yes.
How you doing, everybody? Welcome, new faces. I wanted everyone to know that if you get a chance to stop by the Greater Biloxi Subdivision, started this mission about two years ago trying to help homeless people, and I don't know what the exact number is, but presently we have about eight homes that are being completely gutted and remodeled, 10 that have been finished. We broke ground on new home the day before yesterday. The end of Southern Avenue is breaking ground on another new home. The state has, I believe, sent the, making us a historical district to Washington, D.C. I think Mike eventually will get with us and get together and explain to people it's not very easy, but what it basically is, is the money you spend on your home, you get a tax credit. So let's say you could get $50,000, you're not waiting to get that back in property tax. You can sell that to your bank. It's a whole convoluted thing, but I think we should have a thing. And no, you do not have to make your house look exactly like it used to. So what it's basically going to do is it's going to help people who don't have fixed things up. I'm not an accountant. Mandy knows a lot about it, but I'm noticing that money is starting to move into the neighborhood to do things, and it's really, really come a long way, and a lot of hard work by a lot of people. And I don't want to beat a horse to death. Obviously, we brought some subjects that have brought people who had an interest in the homeless, but they're not around anymore. That issue isn't going away. So my guide now that it's all been taken care of is Tara Lane. You watch trash build up on Tara, you know there's an issue. Mike probably went in and checked. Three days ago, two homeless people moved in at the south end of Tara. Today, it was four. One of them is a known drug dealer. I don't know how much money the city spent last year on policing that area, but it has to be a lot less this year. And I'm just saying that I don't think the city's job is to police that property. I think Mr. Anderson should, but maybe we should get together and nip it in the bud, try and address the problem before it becomes big again. They're doing something back there. It's all going to be positive, but people aren't going to just find a home tomorrow. So my, some ways, I'd like to thank everybody to take a ride through my neighborhood, some homes that people are going, why is he putting copper gutters in? But there is some beautiful stuff, as Mike would know. So I bitch and moan, I'm sorry, complain about a lot of things, but please, come by, and it's really going to help people get homeowners insurance that can't afford it. We're working to try and pool people together. We really are trying to do a lot of good things, but good luck to you, Mike.
Thank you. Anyone else? My right, your left? Yes, ma'am. Sir. Ma'am, sir.
I'm Dr. Gwen Catchings. I live at 316 Raynor Street. Thank you, Councilman, President Gavin, for mentioning the awareness, litter awareness campaign and, and Mayor. I walk my dogs from Raynor on Division to Corvette down towards Bayview. You would not believe, or you may know, there are plenty of tourists who jog and walk that area. And what do they see? Trash. All the way down through there. Last week, I actually picked up some trash in the, at the corner there of Division and Raynor. But all I could do is throw it over on the grass from the street because there's no garbage can there. The only garbage can along that whole area is at the bus stop. Now, that doesn't guarantee, of course, that people are going to use the garbage can, but I will tell you, I've done it many a times, I will pick the trash up and put it over in there if I had a trash can. I'm not going to pick it up at the corner of Raynor, I mean of Division and Corvette and carry it all the way down to the bus stop. Can't do that. So I'm asking you to consider trash cans along that stretch because it is embarrassing. It is embarrassing to see the tourists coming down through there and what they see. Okay? I've lived in Los Angeles, so I, I know where it goes from there. The other thing, too, is unfortunately, at the dog parks, too, you have people who have dogs, they walk them, the dogs use the bathroom, they don't pick it up. So all the way down Corvette Street, there's no stray dogs. Now, these are people who own dogs and walking them. All the way down Corvette Street, there are piles of dog poo all the way down Corvette Street. So, you know, keep that in mind in this litter campaign. I don't know what you can do. I would even say issue some citations, but something to help deal with the dog poo that's along there. Okay? Thank you so much. I'm going to make one last comment. My buddy, Councilman Tisdale, knows about K through 12. And K through, I taught college. K through 12, you sit one behind the other. In college, we alter so that everybody has a clear view of everyone. And so just like you have it here, if we did that out here, it would make it a lot more personal because I can see each of you versus being sitting behind someone like you think I'm a cheat. Okay? Thank you very much, and like I say, please do what you can for Corvette Street.
Thank you. Anyone else? My right? Raise your hand to be recognized. Anyone in the back of the room? One more time. My left, your right? No one else? All right. Citizen comments is now closed. We'll move on to the policy agenda. Clerk would read the first topic?
Orders to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning for two parcels of land from waterfront to community business for 1732 and 1736 Beach Boulevard.
This item was, is this first reading?
Yes.
All right. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Mr. Creel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Just remind everybody, this is the first reading. Item B.
Resolution to vacate a 15-foot by 111.8-foot utility easement situated in the rear of parcel presently identified as 1884 Courtney Lane to allow the construction of a guest cottage.
Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Creel. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Nail, Mr. Creel.
I spoke to several residents that actually live in the Lauren Falls neighborhood, and no objection to this. It's, it's well received, so.
All right. Mr. Nail?
I talked to a few people over there, and they said they didn't mind it at all.
All right. Any other discussion? Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, just one minor thing. Usually they get with the utilities, and basically the utilities will inform us whether there are any, if there's any of those private utilities in the easement. And the only thing, Christie, I wanted to note here, and maybe just a head nod one way or the other, was Unity Fiber said they, they have an objection, but they gave no reason for that. I just, so occasionally we get those that say they have an objection, so I don't know if they, but it doesn't make any difference. I just mentioned that in passing. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on this item? There being none, all in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimous? Next item.
Mr. Marshall didn't raise.
What's that?
I got him. He's good. Mr. Marshall didn't raise his hand. I mean.
We got it.
Were you in agreement?
I'm in agreement.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next item.
Resolution authorizing execution of a contract with D N P for HVAC services for the Gruwich Community Center.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion to table it.
You have to.
You got to make the motion for, to put it on the table before you can table it.
Okay, let's go with it.
All right. Move for discussion purposes. All right. Mr. Marshall is moving it.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Marshall?
First things first, I'm just going to take a minute, so I don't want to rush because it's very important to my community, very important. I've asked that the person in charge that knows the C D B G funding to appear, to answer questions. I went through my council president to ask him to present it for the executive side, to administrative side, to, to make that person available. He was explaining to me that you are aware, and she's not here. Can you explain to me why?
Mr. Marshall, if you have any questions on this, I'll be the, as the C A O, I'll represent the community block grant. And it was requested, if you had any specific questions, to let me know, and that we would go into detail on those.
I also received the letter from the mayor explaining to me the law. The reason why I'm doing this, I want to, I want to get a backstory, because a lot of times people come up to me and they say, why don't you do this? And why don't you tell them to do that? And we've had citizens come up to this table and say things that are wrong in the, in the area, and they see me every day. And they wonder, well, I just can't go make someone or ask someone to do that. Also, if you notice that the, each of these councilmen that gave, that they discussed issues in their neighborhood, they're discussing it with you in this room. And I want the people to know that there's a, to understand there's a reason for that. And it's not that they don't, we don't see the problems in the community. It's not that we don't understand the problems in the community. You're calling us, but they don't understand that we are bound by law. And we received a letter from the, from the mayor. If you don't mind, I'd like to read that, just a little part of it. It came on June 24th, and it says a reference to the mayor council protocol. Per section, and it gives the law, direct contact with directors or city employees is not permitted without contacting the C A O or myself, meaning the mayor. So I. So a director would be, a director would be Chief Miller, the fire chief, Public Works, Parks and Recreation. Anything that directly concerns our citizens, we have to come to you, meaning the seven people up here. Okay, is that correct?
Let me, let me respond as far as the spirit and how it's been implemented. Talking to folks, you know, in a five-minute conversation is a lot different than saying putting this together. And that was the intent of this thing back when. We've never, you know, raised a problem with, hey, I have a question if one of our nine directors. But the intent of actually tying, you know, having to stop while there may be some other things, budget or things that they're working on, that was the intent to at least let us schedule if it's going to be over a two-minute conversation or just a question, yes or no. We've never really had an issue with those kinds of conversations. Is that not a fair assessment in all of our directors? I think Christie's probably the one that has been most interrupted during the middle of the day on, and chief, both chiefs. And so that was the intent in practice. And we never had an issue with some of those things that happened. But just, I guess with the new council, I just wanted to, you know, just establish, hey, we'll be responsive to everything that you need. And but just for, you know, for the, with Rick here, he kind of understands what the intent was to, hey, we'll schedule if something needs to more than a very straightforward conversation, yes or no, or I'll get that moving for you. Those are the kinds of things that have certainly been acceptable and been practiced over, at least since 2015 during my administration. Rick, I don't know if you had anything, but let me specifically address the HVAC and some of the questions. And I think y'all did have a pretty much an in-depth discussion with regard to CDBG and some of the opportunities for the HVAC that was pulled for consideration. This money, this is community development block grant monies with a lot of federal strings. It was intended specifically for low mod and HVAC or those kinds of opportunities. And I think that was about a year and a half ago. COVID money related to where we could spend it. And I think that at the time, that was the amount of money that we could do to replace some of the really problem areas in the Gruwich Center with regard to very expensive HVAC issues that have been popping up.
Okay, all right, just reading your writing and your letters, okay? It says that the council shall deal with the department and personnel solely through the mayor. And it says here, however, if you have questions on legal issues, you may contact Peter Avi directly. And that would be be the attorney. If you need assistance with specific projects or items, contact my office by phone, okay? And open the door, okay? Personally, I feel like we're in a crunch for time because we have a major budget to do, major decisions to make. And we're not asking that you break the law. We're asking that you put a little leeway there so for the sake of rushing.
Well, and there is a leeway is what I'm trying to say. And we've had these conversations with everyone. That door of mine is always open and we will be responsive to anything directly or more complicated or straightforward. We're here to get things together, to make things happen. So, you know, the words may not convey the spirit. We're here to make things happen together. And that's what I'm trying to say. There's no, I don't think there's a problem. You just got to be in a mode where we're going to work together and you know how it has been working together in the past. And that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, so you're saying that it's okay for me to call a department head and ask a simple question?
Yeah, well, you know, like I said, you have 30 seconds worth, two minutes worth, but you can't say, I need a report that says this. Give me the, you know, cross-reference. That needs to be scheduled. If there's an effort that's going to, that the director can't do, that you have to, you know, get in a mode where someone under, you know, in his chain of command has to do a lot of things. Those are the things that really and logically and reasonably should be scheduled to be responsive to what you mean. You know, in a, hey, I need this. We'll see if we can make, you know, make it happen and this is when and where. That's a conversation that I don't think, you know, this memo is trying to avoid. Conversation's a lot different than request.
Okay, so by me requesting that she come here to answer the questions, that's not a three-minute conversation?
Well, you know, again, I think the part of that conversation was covered in meetings you've already had.
Wait a minute. When you were in the meeting? You were in the meeting? Mr. Creel, you were in the meeting? I was in the meeting. I specifically asked if there are any projects in the last 10 years related to COVID, to CDBG? I need a list of them. I asked her right in front of everybody. And she said, that's everything. No one said anything about a $600,000 COVID disbursement for a contract for air conditioning in that meeting. And I asked that, and that was the whole purpose of the whole meeting. I took time off. We took time off from work for the meeting. But a major project like this, $600,000, basically $900,000, and it was just not mentioned. So I asked, even though after the meeting, I have more questions, that's why I asked that she be here. So you're telling me that you have one person in this whole city that can answer, that knows the laws and knows the program?
No, I'm not telling you that. I'm telling you that this was scheduled over the last, this application of the COVID funding was specifically for low mod and the easiest target for this specific money and the amount of money was the replacement of HVAC at the Gruwich Center. That's what I'm telling. And not one person, there was a number of people, how can we use this money? And it was, that was what the decision was made.
So it was the best use of the money?
At the time, that's right.
Okay, four of the people up here didn't vote for that. So let's, can we address it real quick because it's on the agenda?
You know, again, that's, this conversation is what it's all about. Hey, you know, you can use it or lose it.
Mr. Marshall, we discussed that during those conversations as well with Mr. Gray, Mr. Creel, and Mr. Nail on that, that the previous council, yes, I agree that you're voting on this, but the previous council had set that agenda and because based upon the timeline. And that was detailed in there. Is that correct, Mr. Gray?
Yes.
So that was set up. And what she asked at that point in time was, starting in January, for you to come with your list of programs that we could set for the following year because this year had already been set. Is that correct, sir?
No, sir, I asked her specifically for the last 10 years, if any funds, if any.
I agree, but that's not the statement I was asking.
And I did not get that.
Now, did we not cover exactly what I just stated, Mr. Marshall, during that meeting?
You're discussing future. I asked her for the last 10 years.
And I will tell clerk on those from that.
If she had answered the question, I would have known about this. Everyone up here would have known about this.
Well, let me see. Every five-year plan is reviewed and commented and publicly, so there's been five-year plans for the last 10 years. And that's been, you know, reviewed and talked about and spent in that manner. So we can pull that 10 years worth of the five-year plan. And I think we just finished, this is the last of the fifth-year plan.
Which is what I just asked for, which is what I asked her for during the meetings and I didn't get it. So by me not getting it, the next step is to ask her to come here. Mr. Mayor, in the law, and it struck me very strangely, it says that the seven people up here who make the decisions don't even have an office, are not allowed by law to have a office in City Hall. And it struck me kind of strange, why are we going, we make, we make the rules?
We switch the subject at this point, right? You're talking about, and the question is.
No, I'm bringing out a point.
Okay, but we left CDBG and we're on this question.
We are on CDBG.
Okay.
The point, we're getting deep into the CDBG, but right now I need to know the person who, there's only one person that knows the law, that knows the CDBG, who's in charge of it. And that person I asked to be here is not here. But I want to explain to you why it's important that she's here, is what I'm doing. The rule of the law, the law is that we don't have an office. And I couldn't figure that out. And I was bothering me. I said, we had to make all these decisions. We had, we had, we don't have a desk to sit at. We're not allowed to have that. It says that you guys provide us a place to sign papers and that's it, which is exactly what we have. Is that correct? Okay, now, the thing I wanted to know was, we got to talk to people. We got to ask people. We got to find stuff because we're asking to make million-dollar decisions with a raise of a hand, boom, million dollars. How can we get to this information? We need to make the correct decision. Where do we meet at? Where do we talk at? You sent out a letter, which I, I deal with it, that says that we have to call you first and you outline the protocol. The point I'm making is this. I believe we sitting in my office. I believe when you call someone and you ask them a question, you got a choice to answer it simply or come to the office. So when I ask someone to come here, this is the biggest room. This is the only place we're allowed to sit and work. So technically, the councils, which is the council meeting, council agenda, council room. This is where we, this is our office. So the legislature was correct. They designed it correctly. This is where we go to make decisions. It would be silly to think that we got to make these million-dollar decisions without the possibility of sitting down and having discussions. So today, we're here to have a discussion. That's why I said from the beginning, we're going to be a minute. Okay, now, if I ask someone to show up and you don't present them, but you're going to answer the questions, let's start with the questions. It's going to be you, CAO?
This table right here will.
Okay. The funds that we were talking about came from where? The money did?
Say that.
Where did the money come from?
It's coming from CDBG funding. It would be coming from CDBG funding once the PO and the contract has been cut.
Okay, where are the funds now?
There are no funds now. It's reimbursable.
So we have to pay it upfront and then they send us a check?
Right.
What is the deadline, the absolute deadline this has to be, all this has to be completed by?
I'm not sure exactly, but was that mentioned? It was mentioned during that meeting? I don't remember the exact date.
So you don't know?
I can get the answer for you.
Yes, sir, that was mentioned during there. Do I remember it at this time? No, I don't, but it was briefed to all four of you the same time it was briefed to me. But I will get you that answer back following this meeting.
Actually, that wasn't discussed because we didn't know about this project. So it could not have been discussed.
The deadline for all the projects were discussed at that time, yes, sir. Well, I'm not going to argue with you on there, Mr. Marshall.
Okay, let's back up then. We're talking about two different projects and we're talking about two different deadlines. There are several deadlines. Are you aware of that?
I'm not, I'm not, what deadlines are you talking about? There's a five-year, there's a five-year plan that we're finishing up. There's projects related to the five-year plan. It's been publicly vetted and aware of everyone that has concern with CDBG. There's this COVID-related funding that has to be spent in a timeline. I don't know what the end time is that, but it's not part of the five-year plan.
Who knows?
Susan in Community Development.
Where is she at?
She's not here. And that was my call, okay? That was my call. Now, how do we go forward? You tell me how you want to go forward today, from today on. You tell me how you want, you want to handle this.
I need to get.
For this specific project because it is time-sensitive. And again, it's use it or lose it.
We understand that, but when is the lose-it date?
I don't know. I can get that answer for you.
When did all of this start? How much time have we had? How long, how long have you been working on this?
About three years.
And now all of a sudden.
Not all of a sudden, and all of a sudden, it's been, it's been in the plan and at least a year on how to use that money that's related to this COVID stipulation.
Okay, let's talk about what it could be used for, okay? In East Biloxi specifically, could that be used for roof repairs for the?
No, no, I don't think so.
Are you sure?
I'm not sure.
Okay, during the Katrina, my section of Biloxi, the original section of Biloxi was devastated. You know it is, you spoke about it. I see your commercials about it. That water came in, we seen the animation of it, came in, it went whoosh, it just moved whole houses. It went from one side to the other side and then it went back out. Full houses, whole houses off their foundations were. As I was knocking on doors and I was talking to people, they began to invite me into their house. And they showed me where their floors are buckling, where their floors are just falling in. And they need, and they have bad, they have bad roofs still. The houses are being settled because what happened was there, where the piers are sitting, the water, the ground had been destabilized and it just was, it's out in the ocean. We know that. So we've got senior citizens, 70, 80, and 90 years old. They can't go get along, 30 or more to get, they need help to get their houses fixed. So could it have been used to help them?
Mr. Marshall, that was discussed during that meeting. Matter of fact, it was discussed in detail that we could do that.
Okay.
But that was not also, that was portion, as we went through that program, of what the council voted on. That was not in that particular budget. So can it be done? Yes, sir. Did we, did she at that point in time advise to be able to put that into the January of '26 budget or bill? Yes, she did. So come there, that's what we'll take a look at and see, sir.
No, that's not.
You approve this, then we'll move forward.
No, 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 sir, I want understanding. Nothing beats our understanding. Nothing beats an understanding.
I'm sorry, didn't hear you.
What I, you're talking about regular CDBG funds and it was very clear, we're talking about CDBG CV. Two different rules divided up. That's why I was trying to get you to understand. Now, what we discussed was not, anything had really nothing to do with CV. She never mentioned it. I asked her about it for the last 10 years. And the answer was, I have, I have nothing. No one up here has that information. So again, since we don't have it and we're going to make a $600,000 decision on money that could have been used to fix our parks, that could be used to fix houses for our senior citizens, the next question I guess would be, it could have been used to even build housing. We have the most empty lots in our area than anywhere. I asked a simple question, could it be used for that? Could it have been used for that?
Well, let me, let me say this. She's on her way over here right now and you can ask that question when she gets here. But as I understand it, it cannot. That money that you're voting on today was designated for COVID relief with those specific questions. But she's, she'll be here in just a couple of minutes.
When was it, when was it done that way? How many years ago?
She's on the way. It, a lot of it was, well, nevermind, I won't say that, but. Yeah, she's on the way.
She's not going to be happy.
Okay, your specific question is, how could this 900 or this item before you, could it have been diverted to be used in other places? And she'll answer that specifically. And then the 10-year plans, the last 10 years, we're just finishing up five-year plan, the latest five-year plan. And then prior to that, which kind of got us in 2014 or 15, that was another five-year plan. So those are some things that are discussed and approved. So those are some things that have, uh, discussed and approved at, at the Jackson HUDD offices, and so, I mean, there's a lot of, a lot more to it than you can just use it, and she'll be able to address that. But any other things that you want to bring up before she gets here for that matter?
Well, the questions that I have to ask seems to me, I guess, I guess you did get the point, the person I need to ask not here. So she's coming, then, I don't know how the president want to proceed, you want to, you want to vote that, um.
I'm sorry.
My ultimate vote's gonna be to table for two weeks, my ultimate.
I'll comment, Kenny, if he's giving me an opening.
With all due respect, we still have some comments, Mr. Tisdale, okay, Mr. Tisdale?
So as I understand it, these are federal funds that must be expended in a COVID-related project, or projects of some sort, okay? And there's a pending deadline of June 16th, 2026, for a project to be designed and implemented. Now, I don't know exactly what designed and implemented means, but I would assume if it requires some sort of construction, or obviously contracts, and so forth, I take it it has to be ready to go. But if that, if that project, if the deadline is June 16th, if that project is not designed and implemented, then the amount of that funding, I think it's 925,000, 929,000, I believe, of which 675,000 is going to be used for the HVAC at the Gruich Center, and I think the intent was that the Gruich Center, some of you may remember with COVID, you had to go somewhere and receive your, your COVID immunizations, that's where I went. I went to the Gruich Center, and there were a ton of people there. There's a procedure, though, for how these CDBG funds with hearings and input and things like that, so there's a process to be followed. And I, what's going through my mind is, if another COVID-related project were, were to be considered at this point, what would the timeline be to conduct that process and those hearings and advertising in order to have that program designed and implemented by the June 16th deadline? I, I believe if I understand Mr. Marshall, that's sort of the reason for the, to table it today is to look at alternatives. Now, there's already been a, a process that brought us to this point. And usually I go to those hearings, there are usually two a year, and I missed both of them this year. But some years I make both of them, most years I make at least one of them. Generally, they're poorly attended. And having, having said that, I, I don't want to put words in Mr. Marshall's mouth, but if I were in his shoes, I might be looking for other projects that might be COVID-related that would qualify for this 929,000. Now, but to be clear, if whatever project is, that we come up with, if there's an alternative project to this HVAC program, HVAC replacement and project at the Gruich Center, it's, it's got to be pretty much signed, sealed, and delivered by June 16th, so there's 11 months. I don't know how long the process took to go, to get to the HVAC at the Gruich Center, but if we table this, there may be other projects that come forward. Based, based on new council members here.
This, this is the last step, but there's been an approval cycle in Jackson, especially the HUD office, so there's a number of steps you gotta go in verification, so I mean, that's a question Susan will be able to tell you.
There's a process, and, and this is, I guess, a special allocation from Congress that's COVID-based.
Definitely.
Here we are, Congress moves slowly, but here we are, five years after COVID, and we're expending COVID-related funds. But I, I don't know if that's the point you were trying to make, I think you were headed that way, but.
That's exactly where I was heading, the point is, do we have enough time to redirect those funds? If you ask, if you polled the people from my community in this room, if they want the, they want to spend that money on air conditionings, or from the projects that I just mentioned, you, I don't even have to ask them, you know the answer. So we want to know, what do we have to do? Because basically all this information, that the problems that we're seeing is in these, is in our district.
Let me, let me ask you two, okay, so suppose we, suppose we are able to reallocate that, we're still sitting with about a $600 problem at Gruich, how are you proposing doing that?
I was here last week, and you said that you're gonna be floating some bonds for some air conditioning. So the COVID money.
It has to be paid, and that's the point, so we're not, we're pushing one problem away and trying to address the other problem, so we'll see what the best actually.
Actually, actually, ma'am, I think, I think we're robbing Peter to pay Paul, we're Peter all the time. So you're taking the money that we could use in our area, that we could use directly in our area, to go to the other area, when you can, you can find another source of funds, I am not against the air conditioning system. What I'm, what I have a problem with is the funds, where they're coming from.
Yeah, well, Susan's, Susan's here today, Susan Pickett, she can come up and, and address those specific questions as far as timelines and the availability to use these funds on the Gruich HVAC, as well as the timing of what, what would we do if we didn't pass it today, or, you know, what's the deadlines here?
Ms. Pickett?
Ask the questions, let Councilman Marshall.
Before Susan gets started, I just want to, I've been listening a little bit, several years ago, you, you came before the council because these block grants used to qualify throughout the city. Even in my Ward 6, there was a time when there was some homes or apartments that may have qualified for it, but then they, they didn't qualify. So it, it came down to a, a kind of a specific area in 1 and 2, where these block grants became relative, that's number one. Number two, all this has been in process, and there certainly is a need in the community for this, there may be a higher need, as Mr. Marshall is alluding to, as he sits in, representing Ward 2 now. And there's also January 1st, we, this isn't like we're exhausting all of the funds, we still have funds available starting on January 1st that we can identify needs or projects in the community, and we can start that application process, because there's a lot of red tape to get through, and a lot of hurdles to jump through in order to get these approved and processed. I just want to make sure I'm laying a framework of kind of where we're at. Now, can we solve this impasse? Thank you for showing up, and perhaps we can make some headway.
Okay, yeah.
Ms. Susan, I want to say, this is no slight against you in any way. When I met with you, I felt like you were trying to answer all the questions that you could. However, I did not receive certain vital information that would have been very important for me making the decision today. That's why I asked that you show up today, it was important. I don't have a problem with you personally, or the way you handle your business here. I appreciate, I know what you do, you've reached out to a lot of people because of you, a lot of people have things in this community they would not have had. The process of me getting information hinders us and keeps our hands tied, so we're trying to work through the process. The deadline of losing the funds, and my, and to my understanding is, June of 2026, which is next year.
Correct, it has to be spent, expensed, and closed out.
Okay.
That's the CV, the COVID money.
The COVID CV.
All tied back to the pandemic, which is over.
Okay, that was how many years ago?
It started in 19, we received $272,000. We proposed, and we started a program to do rental assistance with the, throughout the homeless and the vulnerable people in Biloxi. HUD held the program up for nine months, so we had to switch gears to spend the money. So we moved the project, we amended the budget again, to do a resource center, start to house the most vulnerable during these type of disasters. That project fell through because we were gonna, we proposed to pay for the renovation, and the building fell through. Then we switched gears again, and all this time, the deadline was June 23. Well, everyone up here knows a, a, a construction project takes years. So then we came up with another project. It was in Ward 3. Got ready to go, but it wasn't zoned for that. So that stopped it. So in the meantime, HUD was telling us they're taking it back, that's drop deadline.
Excuse me, okay. I'm counting three different projects, so when you say that, you mean amend, what do you call it?
We've been doing amendments to the 19.
Can you explain to me what amendment is?
It's amendment with, it's like the budget. It's, the action plan is the, is the CDBG budget, and we have to go through the process.
And there's approval cycles, especially in, in, in Jackson, I mean, that's, that's who you interact with, and the timing comes up.
Excellent.
Okay, so wait a minute, so you, we already, so this air conditioning was not a part of that?
No, and can I finish? Please, so at that point, HUD was telling us, you know, the money was going away in '23, so we, we couldn't find anything to do, the pandemic was over with. We're not the only city that didn't spend.
Let me stop you right there, okay? You said you couldn't find anything else to do with it?
That, that was applicable.
Related that tied back to?
COVID.
COVID.
Okay. Can you, I'm gonna let you finish, okay? But what projects, you're familiar with East Biloxi, you know, basically all the area over there. Is there any projects over there that it could have been used for? If these people in this audience right now had have known that we had this kind of money, there was no projects?
You can't do, I know your priority is housing, you couldn't do housing with this.
Okay, what, what could be done?
There's different, I don't have that. By that time, the money was, the pandemic was over. They had already told us they were taking everybody, we're not the only city that didn't spend it. So we thought it was, it was still in our line item, we, the city, myself, HUD, it was, it was gone. HUD came down in August of '24, and met with myself, Christie, and the mayor, and said, we don't want y'all to lose this money. They gave, they asked us, they're the ones that told us, recommended us do the HVAC project at the Gruich Center. We looked at even doing the Snyder Center, to do both of them, but it's not, the whole area is not low mod. So they recommended this project.
Let me ask you this. Let's say there was a group, or let's say we want to use it to, you saying, we can't, we could not use this money for parks.
You could do parks.
Okay, like, I'm not talking about any park in particular, I'm just, I'm just saying.
CDBG money, Mr. Marshall, this was special money.
Money though, right?
It was special.
Almost a million dollars, really, right? It's money, right, it could have been used.
It had to be tied back to?
But you just said it could be, it could have been used for parks.
It would be, you'd have to really reach to see if you could use it as a park.
Okay, when I pulled the guidelines of it offline, simply, it said parks.
Well, now we're at the point where we need, if we want to spend this money, we need to.
It says also rehabilitation.
COVID-related rehab.
Has to be COVID-related.
That's very COVID-related, they're gonna, they're sick, they're in their house, they're falling through, they got floors cracking in, they can't get comfortable, you got all type of acid and mold and everything else, it's very COVID-related, we can make that happen. We have a problem with the air conditioning versus air conditioning for the people. So we're trying to figure it out, so what I need to do is, I need two weeks. Will this be in table for two weeks, while we sit down and go over the possibilities of what could be done? Would that counsel, would we lose it?
We're gonna be in danger, because if, if we switch gears now, you're gonna have to go through the process, which is a 90 to 120 days process, to get it approved with HUD.
But if someone needs that in our area, and we got to do a little extra work, that's what we get paid to do. We gotta, we gotta push, we gotta push the envelope, because that's what our people need.
Well, the question is, you know, you've kind of indicated, you know, and that, you know, for housing rehab, are there any kind of stretch, like you said, with the people you're gonna have to deal with in Jackson, to redo this? You know, what is it, what?
We have to do, I don't think we'll make the, to spend all that money, by the time we get this program started and up and running.
Basically, we got more money than we knew what to do with.
No, no, again, it, it's a process, and it's gonna probably take, to, to stop this process and engage another, and finish it by the 26th, I mean, 2026.
That's, that's the administration and the council's call.
So we had, so you're saying this, I need to know. With two weeks, with two weeks, kill it, that's all we need to know, do we, can we handle two weeks, and we, we still, look at the possibilities.
Two weeks, I guess.
Okay, specifically, Susan's gonna need some questions to ask HUD and Jackson. Exactly, what do you want to apply for? COVID-related.
Possible, what you want to do COVID-related?
Okay, let me rephrase you, let me rephrase it, because I, he just, he speaks for Ward 2, he's the voice of Ward 3. I'm the voice of Ward 2, he's the voice of Ward 1. The two of us equal East Biloxi. Now, if I asked my community, if we had $900,000, can we put together something to help our neighbors? I'm quite sure they're gonna say, let's do that, give us a chance, and that's all we asking for.
The qualification is COVID-related.
It's not regular.
That air conditioning?
For CDBG, but that, I mean.
The air conditioning on that roof is COVID-related, but mommas and grandmamas and big mommas, auntie and them, air conditioning is not. I don't understand it, and I don't want to do it here, what I'm asking for, will it be killed in two weeks?
I'll give you the answer, I don't think it will, we're willing to do, to do that, but, you know, those people from Jackson know us, and how we've been using this money. This is specifically told to us, and we can, you know, but we need specifics, you know, suggestions, and to where else we can run this by HUD and Jackson, is that fair, Susan?
Yeah.
You've done it, you've done it in 120 days before, right?
It takes 120 days.
We got, we got, we got 300 and something days, we got 300 and something.
No, no, you don't have 300 and something, you gotta have it completed, whatever projects you have to be completed.
Marshall, and everything spent by next June and closed out.
Okay, will we give, will you give us an opportunity and a chance, we just need a shot in the dark? Will it be okay? We get past the two weeks, and we come back, and we'll vote it up or down how we need to do it?
No, I, I think before two weeks, we've got to understand, of the, the set of things you're asking, can we use this funding for? We've got to be bouncing between, in the next week, with Jackson, with HUD and Jackson. These are the things, can we redirect this money that was approved, that was part of the, the COVID-related expenses, to direct it this way? If you give me those, you give me those specific things, okay, in an email form, or, or come over here, and, and we'll, we'll make the list and type it up, because that's what we got to forward to Jackson. This is what we want to divert these COVID-related dollars to, and they'll give us an answer, is it possible to get it done by the 26th, 2026 deadline?
You still have a question? Mr. Creel, Mr. Creel has a question.
Just a quick question, it's, looking at the resolution, the, the total 939,000, correct? The, the bid from DMP is 624,750, with a balance of 315,000, is that 315 allocated already?
No.
Or is that 315?
No.
Or is that 315 is something that we could actually look and see if we can direct to use at Wards 1 and 2?
We need the specifics of though, because it is COVID-related.
So if we spend the 624,750 for the air conditioners, that is qualified already, suggested from Jackson by HUD, that would, that would suffice, that leaves 315,000 for you and Auntie and, and them to get together and see if we can get an AC or two fixed within Ward, and see if that qualifies.
Let me say this, too, some of your wards reaches out over to the west, okay? You have low mod areas that doesn't have to be in East Biloxi, but there's a low mod areas specifically when it comes to transportation that could be in there, so Susan, I think we can give them a copy of what, we talked about this one.
Yeah, we have that.
So it's, it's not Ward 1, Ward 2, it's, it's low mod, low mod is the key. So any kind of COVID-related acceptable expenses, we're willing to go to, go to bat with.
So.
I don't have, oh, go ahead, I have a problem.
I guess it's a solution for you, I'm all for, I understand your, you and I have talked, I understand. It's a matter of principle, and, and I get it. It's a matter of principle and, and I get it. I understand the bureaucracy that you have to go through and it's, it's truly appreciated. Trust me, I've been there. So is there, is there a solution here to where three hundred and fifteen thousand to be reached out for within your Ward is agreeable? Or would you rather table it?
Within that two weeks, if within the two weeks, we figure we can't get the whole nine hundred, we want the whole nine hundred, we can't do that, we'll do what we gotta do. We don't want to walk away with nothing. But we will-
Councilman, we need a list to ask. Will you, 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 your wards in low mod areas, wherever low mod areas, if it's COVID related to spend this, the, the balance that's allocated is what we're asking for. We need that list so we can bounce it off Jackson.
What we asking for is two weeks to see what we can do.
Ms. Pickett, I got a couple of questions. How long you been dealing with block ranch, block grant, community block? How, how long?
Thirty-three years.
Thirty-three years. Have you ever seen a case like this or similar to this, that all of a sudden we pivot and there's a risk of all of a sudden somebody getting cold feet and we lose?
The council approves and approves it. We've had times where the councils not wanted to approve the budget, and if we don't approve it, we lose the money.
Is that because somebody in Jackson got wind of it or?
It's, it's statute. It has to be like the budget that's coming up in August.
I understand all that. What, what I want, this is what I want, your professional opinion. And I understand tabling it for two weeks if there's no risk or very little risk. Is there more than just a little risk or low risk if we table it for two weeks that something could happen that all of a sudden we lose the whole six hundred thousand?
Okay, but we need, we've been kind of living on the edge because we thought they were taking this money. It's, I have it committed in IDIS. It's committed, but with everything that's going on in the national level, you know, they were supposed to take this since two thousand twenty-three. Well, they haven't.
Right, we're talking a lot of time. So you've had it committed in IDIS before though then, right? And you redirected it, you amended it, right?
Yeah, if it's amended, it's amended, but what I would like to do-
It's not the first time it's been amended.
No, but I would like-
It's the same money.
All right, excuse me, excuse me, I still have the floor. So continuing your thought on, you know, what's, so you think it's low risk for two weeks?
Yes.
It would be low risk. Okay, that, that's, that makes me feel a little bit better.
But we, you know, we've got the storm, you know, it's hurricane season out there. So, and things are, you know, so we really do need to like move on what we're gonna do with this project.
Okay.
But let me repeat too, there's still opportunity for the remainder of the nine hundred. So, but we need, what, you know, what do we need to petition to get approved?
Well, I think that's a two-pronged solution as Mr. Marshall, if, if we approve the delay or tabling this for two weeks, I think the plan is, what if we get the nine hundred and divert it for a better, higher use? Can we do that? And then the secondary needs to be, okay, we know we got this much like Mr. Creel said, that we got teed up to take care of this project, the air conditioning unit, but we got another three hundred that we gotta get going. Because if we don't get that teed up, we're losing that whole three hundred thousand as well. All right, thank you.
We do have another question.
Right, let me get to the end first and I'll come back to you, so go ahead.
I got a question. If, let's say we gotta help this person redo their floors, this other neighbor redo the roof, how would that work out? You know what I'm saying? Is that separate projects?
No, it's how you design your program.
That's what?
How you design the program if you want to do emergency repairs, if you want to just do roofs, or if you just want to do a ramp. It's how you set, you, you set it up in your policies to do the program.
Okay.
I think where you, where you're heading to, we've done it, you know, with Back Bay Mission and some of the others, if we allocate that money for them to actually administer that and get reimbursed for those projects that apply. So it wouldn't be, we're gonna do this. We, we would fund Back Bay Mission or whatever available to deliver those specific, I know they do a great job with utilities and, and roofs and stuff like that. That would be a, a, a method or an angle to, to do that.
Okay, so let's say, let me, let me go back on something else. Let's say we had housing where a subdivision was plotted in my, in, in Ward Two area, Ward One, Ward Two, East Biloxi, and it's just, it's a nonprofit. And say, I don't know, just it was on Holly Street somewhere like that, and they want to build, they need financing to help get up off the ground maybe, foundations to help them to get some money to build thirty-four low income housing. Is that out the question?
I did ask that question. I talked to HUD yesterday and I asked, when you ask about doing the, the base floor level, building the house, with CDBG, you cannot do that because construction. You can't use CDBG funds for residential new construction. You can do rehab and take it down to practically, I mean, it doesn't make sense because it costs more to rehab than-
Right, that's the problem we got.
But that's the way CDBG works. But I did ask, I did ask that question to HUD.
Okay. The next, the next step for this would be, we're having to ask questions and have meetings with you and then to get the information from her. Because this is a timeframe, because you see, we, we're, we're under the bullet right now. Can we, for this specific, can we work directly together to get this done if possible? Open up the chain of communication, keep you in the loop, by all means, whatever it takes. We just need to move quick. In order to move quick, me sitting down, sending you an email, then you sending it to her, you're gonna kill us.
No, you know, propose, you know, what's the timing? She has timing, Rick has timing, I have timing. Just let us know what works, okay? How many people want to attend? This is the subject matter. We never have a problem scheduling things. So, you know, reach out. But I'm asking you, I'm asking you very specifically with everyone, if you're, you're in low mod area and you have some idea of this COVID related stuff, and I think Susan, you can, we can give them the regs on what, what we know or what we're, know at this point, because it may change between, you know, the next two weeks. What, is there some document that we could get to them, you know, in their boxes to say, this is the kind of stuff that we're looking for? And I think that would be a way to proceed. We'll proceed and we'll proceed as fast as we all could get it together, because timing is everything.
I'm gonna reach out to HUD today when I go back to the office and, and just give them a heads up to even see if the possibility, if we can do any kind of housing with this money.
With the COVID money.
I'll jump, I'll jump ahead of what your list is, and that way we will know what we're dealing with.
So you understand where I'm going?
I know, I know.
You understand what we're trying to do?
Susan, what is it, what does that COVID program call? What is it, we have a title for it?
CB.
CB, okay.
Based on the, the information that's on the agenda, the item on the agenda, without standing and they voted today, where would that money, it'll be gone, right?
Yes, if we don't spend it, it's-
No, that's not what I asked you. If we had have voted today, voted up, that would, that would have been, it would have really been gone. This is the last opportunity.
Been allocated.
No, no. If we voted up, if we approved it today, then the people in my community would have lost this opportunity. Is that correct?
No, the people of your community is, is what it's about. I mean, your sentence has served more than anything.
If, if we had have voted today, that money would have went on that air conditioner.
Of course.
Yeah.
So us asking for two weeks to give them an opportunity, you gotta look at that. So I, I appreciate you working with us, but Mayor, we're gonna have to figure out a way to streamline our communications. That's what I'm asking. You gotta have communication, especially when you're under the gun.
Well, I'm all, I'm all for that. But again, let me reiterate, you've never had a problem communicating with me. I'm always through that, that door. They know where I am. And that's what I'm saying to each and every one of you, don't be bashful. I don't know if there's a problem until somebody tells me about the problem. And Rick is, is in the same boat as I, he's, we're just like tied to the, to the hip. So, and, and the law you too. We're here, we're here, and we're gonna be responsible. I can tell you that right now.
What I'm trying to say is the person that we need to talk to is sitting right here.
I'm, I'm gonna reel, I'm gonna reel, let me reel this in a little bit. Before we consider a motion to table, is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Marshall?
Let it go.
Anyone, any other discussion? Okay, you got some discussion? Make it quick.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if it goes here or not, but something to this stature, this, this amount of money, is there any way we can put something in place where if it's anything over a hundred thousand, it goes into the, into the consent agenda rather than the policy agenda? That way, it, I mean, we're looking at six hundred and twenty-five thousand. I don't know if this is the right place to say it, but-
Like I said, it is a process. We, we spend millions of dollars-
Back into the policy conundrum rather than-
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
Yeah. That way it has its own merit and it's up for discussion instead of-
I'm gonna, thank you, Councilman, I'm gonna close this portion before we consider a motion to table. Just with, as you've heard, we appreciate you coming today. I think it's been beneficial for you to make the appearance. You've been doing this for thirty-something years. This project has been worked on since two thousand nineteen and it's evolved and, and to what it is today. I didn't hear that before you got here today. And so I appreciate the spirited conversation. Now the Chair will entertain a motion to table. Moved by Mr. Marshall. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Do I have any additional discussion on the table to mo, the motion to table? There being none, call for the question. All in favor to July twenty-ninth, all to table till July twenty-ninth. All in favor? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. I hope we have a fruitful two weeks. Good luck on your endeavors and I proceed as follows and, and see if we have Plan A, B, and C. All right. Are we finished with the policy? Do we have anything else on policy? Is that all on policy? Okay. We move, Chair entertain a motion for the consent.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Creel, seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Creel?
Just one quick question on, what is it, five X? Have we, have we picked up all the property on, for the Pops Ferry? Was that the last, the last hurrah there?
Yeah, there's one, one additional that should be concluded in the next week or so.
Okay, and that guy, he held out pretty good, I believe, but that, that was the only question. Thanks.
Yes. All right. Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, this may take a few minutes. Peter, on item A, this is a resolution, proposed changes, Mississippi Gaming Commission regulations. If you could, just give us a, if it's possible, give us a brief overview of what these, what the implications of the changes are.
The, I, I think from time to time, probably every two to three years, the Gaming Commission, which is in charge of denying or approving not only casino sites, I mean, they also regulate bingo, whether operators are qualified, they do a lot of different things. They have their own regulations that they go by, which basically conform to the statutory law. So this year they had a number of regulations. What we've attached here are their proposed regulations dealing with site approvals. In part, they are relying on some of the existing case law that's, that's come about conforming to what the, what the state law is, what we had always stated that the state law was. They also put a requirement in, if you're going on land, you still have to pay that in lieu lease, which we have advocated from the start, so the state gets its full benefit. And I think there was a twenty-day comment period on these regulations. We, we looked at the regulations, we think it's in the best interest of the overall gaming industry, and so we've, we would like to send a letter of support to the Gaming Commission.
Right, but specifically, what are we pressing for? What changes are we pressing for?
Well, it's sort of a red line they have, but they talked about-
We're just endorsing-
They restated the eight hundred foot rule and, and this is just expressing support, just like if there's a, anybody could come and speak for or against something.
Okay, so we're, we're not asking for anything additional other, other than what's bubbled up through the, the Gaming Commission itself?
Right, and I think it's, I understand just from a twenty-five thousand foot, the, the need to do things on the beach related to that, I think is, is a little bit eased.
Right, all right. So that's all it is, is supporting what they're proposing. All right, thank you. Don't be going with the others, Ken. On item E, Chief, if you can just give me a head knob, I know we approved deputy clerks of municipal court and it seems like we've approved quite a few and officers retire, but basically as a deputy clerk of municipal, municipal court, that allows them to do some things, that designation.
Work at the front desk, they'll, they'll have officer or individual swear to it.
Gotcha, okay. Because folks are on vacation, on duty, so you need a-
Make sure we have enough people all the time where we can attach.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. On item I, this is a fire department question. Chief Geiser, what, what, what? If you have just a second, this is, we're moving money from machinery and equipment, this is fire insurance rebate, and we're moving it to mechanical and plumbing, and that line item is sixty-six sixteen, but I didn't see that in the, in the monthly financial reports. I didn't see a line sixty-six sixteen, or is that being created or?
Being created, yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Thanks, Chief. And then on item X, we could revisit that again. Mr. Creel had asked, asked about this item and there were a couple of parcels, I think, but is, is this related to the Mason Deorleens property or, Peter, is this a different parcel?
This is Mr. Bakhter's property.
So it's north of the tracks?
North of the tracks.
Okay, all right, that's all I need to know. Thank you. That's all the questions I have, Mr. President.
Mr. Shoemaker?
My question was already answered, I have nothing else.
Mr. Gray? Mr. Marshall? Mr. Nail? And I'm good as well. We'll go ahead and vote on the consent, then I'll ask for any exceptions. All in favor of the consent? Those opposed?
I'm four, I'm four.
You're four? Okay, he's four, not opposed. So consent passes, I'll ask for exception. Mr. Gray, any exceptions? Mr. Marshall, any exceptions? No? And Mr. Nail? Mr. Creel?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tisdale?
None.
Mr. Shoemaker?
None.
And I have none. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll move on to code enforcement. Go ahead and open this hearing up.
Good afternoon. Item A is one five-nine Acacia Avenue, Robert Rippey and Mari Bauer.
All right. Chair entertain a motion for two weeks.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Shoemaker. Any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries.
Nobody raise your hand.
All right. All in favor of the, raise your hand? Those against? Okay. Motion, the clerk needs to look down the row and see the hands that are either yea or nay. Just a point of order. Continue.
Item B is 165 Acacia Avenue, Emmanuel Barbara Bradley. This has been resolved.
All right.
Item C, 1865 Beach Boulevard, Cortland Biloxi LLC, resolved.
Great.
Item D, 1524 Beach Boulevard, Wise Holdings LLC, resolved. E, 1877 Beach Boulevard, Sherry Shayona LLC, this has been resolved. Item F, 861 T Street, Laura and David Wong, we're requesting two weeks.
Yep. Chair entertainer, motion for two weeks.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Creel. I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries, two weeks.
Item G, 335 Fayard Street, Lilian Cummings et al., this is resolved. Then H, Zero Strangie Avenue, Odie Swetman et al., this is resolved. I, 178 Oak Street, Lehi and Vu Nguyen, this is resolved. Item J, 186 Coon Street, Dai Nguyen, this is resolved. Item K, 401 Pearl Street, Russell Doucette et al., this is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Russell Doucette et al., 401 Pearl Street? Is there anyone here? There being no one, this case is closed.
Item L, 635 Wetzel Drive for Richard Galifero, this is resolved.